Danielle Davis, how are you?
I am good.
You're good.
I'm nervous.
Don't be nervous. Pull the microphone a little bit closer.
A little bit closer.
The people, yeah, just, you just pull it this way.
This way?
Yeah, just like that.
Just like this?
There you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Listen to me, you are running for Eagle City Council.
Yes.
It's quite a thing. It's quite a thing. I will never be doing it. I don't think I could ever find myself to want to do it, which always begs the question, why do you want to run for city council Eagle?
Well, it all started when I was posting on social media about my HOA, because I was having difficulties with my HOA. And people were attacking me, they were supporting me. The, the posts got over like 10,000 views and there were dozens and dozens of comments. And then they disappeared. So I, I felt frustrated about that. And so it spurred me into doing more posts about it and getting more attention on social media. So when that happened, neighbors and friends around said, you should run for city council, because they, they looked at my responses before they disappeared. And they, and they said, you should run for city council. And so I thought, well, I don't know anything about city council. You know, I'm here concerned about my issues with my HOA. And I, and because of all the attention that my posts were getting, obviously a lot more people are concerned about their HOAs in the area, right? So, um, and then my, my focus kind of shifted a little bit. And I thought, well, what is city council, right? What, what do they do? And so I researched it, I did my due diligence and I found out that, you know, they oversee the budget and they have a lot to do with growth. And I thought, well, I, I'm interested, I'm really interested in growth, because all my life I've lived in new construction. So I, you know, I've seen communities grow. And, um, I have a degree in accounting and I'm, you know, I'm an enrolled agent and I do taxes. I, I see budgets all the time. I look at financials and I thought, okay, I could do this. And so then I was thinking about running and I didn't know if I wanted to or not. And the, the person who said that I should run, who got, who was like prompting me to do it, said, well, I have this campaign person to get you in touch with. And so then I talked to the campaign person and then she got me kind of a little bit more excited about it. And I thought, sure, I could do it. But then she said, here, let me send you the proposal of how much it's going to be. And when she sent me the proposal, I kind of like gulped and I took a step back and I'm like, oh my gosh, there's, how am I going to do this? Uh, do I break into retirement money to do this, you know? I, and so then I started to do cost effective kind of things. Well, what if I win, then I, you know, I have the potential of getting some money back. And, and of course, the, the view from the, the campaign manager, um, that, that wanted to be my campaign manager, was that, well, you'll just earn the money back in fundraising. And throughout my life, I have not liked fundraisers. So why would I want to be a fundraiser, right? But I did take marketing, so I know that it, you know, there's a value to it. So I thought, well, could I do this? And when I was taking up, when I was taking the time to think about that, the person contacted me back and she said, well, I'm full up for this election cycle. You can't, I, I can't support you. And you know, I, I can't work for you. And I, I was like, well, I kind of had made up my mind that I was going to do it, because I'm at a point in my life where I'm turning away from my nuclear family, because my kids are grown and I, I want to be more involved in my community. I, I want to help my community instead of just my nuclear family. So I had decided that I did want to do it. And I thought, well, maybe it's a good, good thing that she doesn't, you know, that she doesn't want to work with me for this cycle. And so I play bridge also in the city of Eagle, because, um, my mom was here, for a while before she passed. And, um, she, we, she taught me how to play bridge. So I formed a bridge group in Eagle and I've gotten to be good friends with them. We've played bridge for, I don't know, I think we started in 22. So it's going on three years now. And, um, I said, hey, uh, what do you guys think if I were to run for city council? And I kind of floated the idea. And they all said, yeah, I think you should run, because, you know, they knew about my struggles with the HOA. They knew about, um, my, my struggles with, with my, my ex. You know, they, they knew about, they knew me personally. And they said, yes, I think you should run, because you're not a political person. You're not one side or the other. You just want the best for what you see to be done, right? You just want to benefit the most people. And that's exactly what I want to do. And so that's why I'm running. I am not, you know, I, when one, when the campaign manager pulled out, I was kind of relieved. And I went and I announced it to my bridge friends that, hey, you know, she's not going to support me, so I don't have to pay her. And, you know, maybe I can just wait a couple of cycles before I do this. And when I said that, a person that I really respect, that I play bridge with, who is, um, a lawyer from California. And he graduated from really prestigious schools. And he said, I think you should run. I will give you money if you run. And I was like, wow, you have that much faith in me? Okay, I'll run. And so then I started my campaign.
I have questions.
Okay.
Okay. First off, were you on Nextdoor?
Yes, I was on.
I knew it. I knew it. Those local moderators, do they get you?
They're biased. Oh, my gosh.
Like they, the fact that somebody, oh, what, I can't get into it. But yeah, okay. So now, so you hear, you're like, and okay, so he was on Nextdoor.
Yes.
And they just like, they can make him disappear. What, uh, what, if I may ask, what was the issue with your HOA?
Fiscal responsibility and cash flow. Because since I've been working in, um, the accounting field, I do the books for, um, multiple construction companies. And I see what happens when they come in at the end of the year for their taxes. Basically, it's a mess. And they just, it, it's almost like the shoebox. And they say, here, make it work, right? And so I know that for the, for the greater part, that construction people, if they, if they need to do something and there's no money in a particular account, they know, well, they could, they can theoretically move it from one account to the other. So then they just pay from that account and then fix the accounting at the end of the year, right? There's nothing wrong with that. It's not illegal, but it's not a good tracking of your, your revenue and your expenses, because you're swapping money between things, between entities. And, um, the HOA.
May I ask, so like, say, we have a contractor, we share a contractor. He's doing my bathroom, he's doing your kitchen. Okay. I've paid him $50,000, you've paid him $50,000. And he has used all of your 50s, only used like five of mine, because he just bought tile. Anyway, so he used all of yours and he's like, okay, Danielle's going to give me another 50, but not for another month. I need to keep going, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna borrow out a Matt's account over here. And I'm going to count that towards revenue. Or now it gets fuzzy, because it's like, is it double revenue? Or is it just a single revenue, then you have like a debt on that, that account? So it gets tricky in that you're just swapping from project to project.
Right.
Because then you have a lot of dollars moving around. And if you're not really precise with like, no, 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 you actually have a debt on this account and you have an IOU from this account and blah, 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 then it gets funky.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
That's, that's just within one account. What I'm talking about is between different entities. Because contractors by and large, for each development, they get another entity, another LLC, right? So a certain community is one entity. And then another community is another entity. And then another community is another entity. And so each entity has their own owner structure. There, if it's a partnership, if it's an S corp, whatever. And then you have an HOA on top of that.
That's trying to get accounting records. Like, why do we have this $100,000 debt here? Like, did you loan our money to that development?
Exactly, exactly. Like, we're paying our dues, right? And we're supposed to have a reserve, we're supposed to see where our money's going. And where is it going? You know, there, there's no accounting for it.
Yeah.
There, there's no accounting for it. There's inside, there, there's conflicts of interest between, you know, like, who's working for the developer, who's working for the HOA? Who's doing the, who's doing the jobs? Who's not doing the jobs? You know, I'm, and because the laws are so lax about HOAs here in Idaho, you can't, you can't, you're, you're theoretically supposed to be able to see the books. And I started a petition. I started a petition, over 50 signatures, we wanted to see the books. And it was ignored, right? And so the viewpoint of the HOA was, we have deep pockets. And we know that we're wrong. We can say you have bad faith, although I didn't have bad faith. And they just throw that word around, because it's a legal term. And if you want to sue us, go ahead and sue us. Good luck.
Are you, is your development completely finished? So you have homeowner representation on the HOA board? Or is the developer still in control of the HOA?
The goalposts are in constant movement.
Oh, you should have called me. I could have got you in touch with Representative Jeff Cornelis. He's the one who ran the HOA bill to try to decrease the threshold for which homeowners have representation on. Anyway, wild times.
Yeah.
Okay, so you started, so that's what the wrangle was, which is like, hey, man, we deserve to see the books, this is our money, you're representing us. And they're like, whatever, we don't care.
Yep.
Okay, and so based on that, people are like, hey, you did a really good job, like, you know, expressing yourself and you're fighting for the right thing. You should run for city council.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. With the city of Eagle, there are a lot of things that have kind of gone on in the last 24 to 36 months, well, even farther than that, obviously. But, um, let's start, let's start with, uh, I don't know, I guess, law enforcement, right? The last mayoral election came down to a couple really tricky things. And one of those things was how to gauge the necessity for additional law enforcement within the city. Then Mayor Pierce wanted to gauge the need for additional law enforcement, based off of the number of crimes being committed that warranted, you know, not like speeding tickets, but you know, other, other big things. And then, uh, Council President Pike, who's now the mayor, was saying, no, 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 we just added Avamore. We should gauge the need for new law enforcement based off geographic area, instead of, you know, just like how many crimes. Because like, you know, it, it doesn't even matter if we have the same number of crimes. If we have, if our law enforcement have to go from, you know, like the, the southwest corner of Eagle, all the way to the northeast corner of Eagle, that's going to be a huge amount, that's going to huge response time, right? What do you think? What's the right thing to do moving forward with law enforcement? How should we view it and how should we gauge our need for additional or fewer?
I, I briefly looked into, um, the law enforcement issue. And I think my viewpoint is that law enforcement should increase, uh, with the population. It should be, it should go step in step, right? The, it shouldn't be judged by the amount of, um, crimes. It should be judged with the amount of residents that they have to protect. Because law enforcement does more things than just fight crime. They, so I, I think if the population gets bigger, then we need to have more law enforcement. Now, that being said, I don't think that we need to make tougher rules for law enforcement. And I don't think that, you know, um, great changes. Well.
What do you mean?
Because I, I was looking into my, the, the other, the other candidates who are running. And the only thing that I found, um, on Robert Gillis, I believe, is that?
Uh, yes. Robert Gillis is running.
Yes. Um, uh, I found that he was supporting some kind of legislation that would make laws tougher here in Idaho. And.
Are you, I mean, I spoke with Robert Gillis. Well, first off, why don't we do this if it's okay with you?
Sure.
Unless we have a really, first off, the, whatever Robert proposes on the state legislate, in the state legislative session, um, that's not something that could be directly affected by the city council.
Right.
Right? And I actually know almost all the bills he was proposing. But regardless, that's, that, like, he might have his own personal feelings about the state legislature. But regardless of that, like, that's not really something that we could get after with city council stuff.
Right, it's not. But it, it just, because I was doing my due diligence and I was researching all the different avenues and the different, um, things that were related to the police and what was happening, it, it seemed like, um, that there were changes that either, that, I don't know if they needed to be made. There, there is good, there, the motivation behind changing for the better is good. I just want to stress that I don't want to change much in Eagle. I just want there to be more accountability, more transparency. And that's what I'm, that's what my campaign is about. I, I'm, um, I'm not trying to change Eagle, because I like Eagle, because that's why I moved here.
Sure.
Right? So I don't, I don't think Eagle or Idaho needs huge changes. I just think that there needs to be more accountability, more transparency.
Awesome. Talk to me about that.
So, okay.
Like, we have, so you feel like we need more of it? Where do you feel like we are lacking transparency and accountability?
Well, um, I think that, well, the current mayor and prior mayors have been accused of having meetings in private and, uh, making sure that the public either is not going to have the ability to report on it or even know about it, right? Like making, um, behind, behind door deals. And I don't think that, I, I think that there should be a paper trail of everything. And I think the, I think there should be more public input. And I think there should be more, um, accountability towards the residents of Eagle. Speaking, I can just say about Avamore, right? When, when Avamore was, um, a possibility of being annexed, I know that there was great public sentiment against Avamore, right? And city council didn't listen to public comment. They decided to go ahead and do it, because they had their own reasons. And so now, for better or for worse, Avamore is part of us. And they are residents and I want to represent them. And I've talked to residents in Avamore and they're upset with their CID. And the CID was one of the selling points that our city council used to annex Avamore, saying where they're going to pay for themselves, because they have the CID, right? So then I, then I said, well, what is a CID? And so then I did some research on the CID. And it seems like the CID is sort of just an incentive for development directly. It is a way for the developer to get cash flow back on a tax exempt basis and be reimbursed for providing, uh, infrastructure for the community. So in a way, the community is paying for their roads and their infrastructure. But they're just paying the developer for it. They're not paying the city per se.
And you're saying the city was saying, hey, we're going to get tax revenue from the CID?
Uh, no, well, no. Well, yeah, some people said that. Some people, some people said Avamore is going to pay for itself, because they have this CID, right?
Sure, but that, I'm sorry, were they saying they're going to pay for themselves by giving us money first? Or they're going to pay for themselves? Because they, the CID and the developer and the homeowners work together, kind of like in this little, in this little dynamic. And so like, the city of Eagle doesn't have to worry about it.
Well, um, one of the, one of the points of like SOS Eagle was that if we annex this Avanmore, that we're going to have more roads to take care of, more infrastructure to, to do. And so, um, the city council said, well, they have a CID, so they're going to pay for it themselves. It's not going to be an expense of the city. Because they're going to pay special taxes in the CID for their roads and infrastructure.
And that's not true?
Well, they, the CID reimburses the developer for the roads.
Yes.
It doesn't go, as far as I, I, I haven't, I haven't researched it.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, but from, what I'm getting from it is that, uh, CID is a special agreement, so that the developer gets reimbursed for his expenses through a tax base, which is a tax, which is exempt money, right?
From the houses and the development.
He doesn't have to claim it as income. So the city is not involved at all. So the city doesn't, the city doesn't pay and the city doesn't get. It's strictly between the, the residents and the developer. And a lot of the residents, when they're buying, don't know until they're closing that they, they have this obligation. So it's kind of hidden, it's, it's behind the scenes. And so when you go to buy a house, you really, I mean, if you know it's in an HOA, you're like, okay, it's in an HOA and there are some rules. And I'm probably, you know, common sense, it's, it's going to be fine, right? They probably think the same thing with the CID, because they don't really know what a CID is. And the first time that you're exposed to it is when you're sitting at the closing table and you're all excited about getting into a house. And there's, there's all these paperwork, you know, all this paperwork, sign here, sign here, sign here, sign here. What am I signing? Okay, well, this is.
I don't know, just keep signing.
Yeah, this is for the CID.
Need a new pen, no problem.
Okay, what, what is that? Okay. And so, so after you've closed and you're locked into this, then you might research it and say, hey, I don't know if I really want to do this. Or maybe I should have thought differently. Or maybe if I knew about this, I, you know, a different home would have ranked higher on my, my list of choices. So I, I think that there, it's sort of like a backdoor deal that, you know, that, that the city and the developer.
Is it the city or is it the state? Like, the state regulates CID, right?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know about that. And so if I get on city council, I will investigate that. And I will, I will learn more about it, so that I can represent the resident, the Eagle residents who are now part of Eagle, who live in Avamore, who are upset about their CID. Because from the people that I'm hearing from, it's like a bad word. Because they don't, you know, they, they didn't know about it and they don't want to pay it, although they theoretically should, right? There, there are roads. But if they're public roads, then maybe more people should be paying for it. I don't know. I, all I know is that it's an issue that they have and I would like to work on it for them.
Gotcha. And you feel that through the city council, you can address a CID?
Uh, I'm, I, I'm going to try and do anything that I can. Through, you know, like with, for an example, the HOAs. HOAs are regulated on a, on the state.
Yeah.
Right, with state statutes. But I have researched it. And I think, I, I know, because I, because I looked this up, city ordinances can be stricter than state statutes. They just cannot contradict them, right? So, um, I, my billing is I'm going to be Eagle's problem solver. So my solution to the HOA problem, at least for Eagle, would be to pass a subdivision ordinance stating that every HOA that's in Eagle, that operates in Eagle, um, has to pass ownership from the developer to the owners in a certain time period, much sooner than 80% or 90%, which is what the state statute is. So it would be stricter as an ordinance. And then also additionally, I would, I would make it, um, that each HOA, once it's been established, has to be, um, brought up to date. And re, so like every, every H, every, okay, I'm losing my track.
No, no, take your time.
So, um, contracts, because HOAs are contracts, right? So every HOA contract that's in the city of Eagle would expire on, at certain intervals. Okay? So that means your HOA would expire, given that they need to be renewed, they need to be renewed with the current owners, not just, you know, like, so when HOAs are originally.
Formed.
Formed, the charter, it's from, it, it's based on what the developer wants, right? It's his vision for the community. And then it exists until the community is established, past a certain percentage of threshold of ownership. So I would like not only the, the, the threshold to be sooner, but then I would, I would also say, after an HOA is established, at certain time intervals, five years, I think longer than five years would be too, too long. The, the makeup of a community can change, right? So from the original vision of the, of the developer, to maybe 20 years down the line, the people who are actually living in the community, the, the theoretic, the, the theoretical, um, vision is that the people on the board are going to change, right? And they're going to enact changes in this document, so the document can change. And that unfortunately doesn't happen a lot, because people get on the board and they get into their, their ways and they just want to go along. And if there's not a problem, then nothing changes. And if there is a problem, then there, the, the, the problem that might not be dealt with in an efficient way. And if the, the person who has the problem just gets fed up, then they just move and there's a new person that comes in and then it just goes along, right? So the problem is never solved. So if you mandate that all the, the contracts will expire and then they need to be renewed with city, with city council oversight and public input, then, um, it would benefit HOAs that are, uh, that are operating the way that they should, because it would be an easy process. Hey, we're just updating our code. We're just making sure that all of our residents are still happy, right? And for the HOAs that have issues that aren't listening to their owners and they're, um, they're, they're blocking certain owners and telling them to move out of the community if they don't like the rules, that it gives them an opportunity to voice their opinion, get, get their, um, their input on the next contract for where they live, without having to go through civil court, without having to, um, rope in a whole lot of other owners who agree with them. Specifically talking about Legacy. Legacy has over a thousand homes, right? So if you want anything done, you have to get a certain percentage of your neighbors to care about your specific issue. Well, that probably isn't going to happen. And that's what the board is counting on. The board is saying, hey, we don't have to listen to you, because you're in the minority. And so pay your dues and we're going to do whatever we want to do. And we're going to take your money and we're going to do whatever, we're going to, we're going to spend it, however we think is in the best interest of the majority of the people there. So I think I'm all about representation, right? So I want every resident to be, to have a voice at the table at city council against big money. Now, I want every owner in an HOA to have a voice, so that they can be happy about where they live, instead of feeling trapped, that they got it, that they got, they're, they're locked into this HOA that doesn't want to, that doesn't want to listen to them, that doesn't want to, you know, make them happy in their neighborhood. Because when you buy a home, you buy a home for the home and the perception of the community, right? And then if you, you are, you're in the, the, you're in the community and you get involved and you start asking questions, and then if you get, um, black, not, if you get blacklisted, it's, it's not a good experience. And you shouldn't have to move because of that. You shouldn't have to spend tens of thousands of dollars and go through civil court either.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I cannot say I have a great love for HOAs.
Yeah.
You know, the, the thing, and again, I don't, I don't know anything about any of this, but the, the thing that gave me pause specifically with the HOA problems is as I started to understand them on the state level, um, especially from a developer standpoint, is it's very common for people to move here and then say like, hey, I want to keep Idaho the way it was. I want to keep Eagle the way it is. And they're like, that means you stop building right there. And what?
Exactly.
I mean, almost everybody wants to shut the door right behind them. And you're like, no, I moved here because it was rural and I loved that cow. Like that cow, I named that cow Brian. Like, and they, the cow doesn't know it's Brian, right?
Yeah.
But the point is like, you love the cow. And what you don't know is 20 years ago, Brian's owner, his name was not Brian. Brian wasn't even around. But the point is that the cow, the lot's owner sold that property to a developer and it was just leasing it back like a dollar a day. So, you know, you have these development contracts and these development agreements. And a lot of times you have, uh, uh, like municipal works that have to be developed at scale before the community can be built out, like a water system or sewage system, drainage system, things of that nature. Infrastructure, again, uh, community infrastructure. And those only work if they're amortized, let's say it's a thousand homes, right? If you get to 300 homes, or you get to 500 homes and the developer has built out the infrastructure for all 1,000 homes and the, and the community gets ahold of the HOA and they're like, this stops today, because I'm keeping Brian. You know? And then you run into this problem where the developer's like, wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa, I can't stop, because we're in it. Like, our profit, our profit over the entire. Whoa, I can't stop because we're in it, like our profit, our profit over the entire project is like the last 150 homes. Like, you know, so you run into this, I, and I, I'm not, I don't work for like the builders, like I have not had great experiences with my HOA. I've just realized like, oh, this is a really tricky problem because if you are somebody like who has to make a profit at the end of the day.
It's not a tricky problem because the builder owns the lots. The, the developer owns those lots. So he is an owner percentage wise of all of those lots. He does not, when you, when you have an HOA, an HOA is built off of units, right? And a unit is each, each lot. And so the developer in the beginning owns all of the lots. He owns a hundred percent. So if he sells 50% of those lots, then 50% are now privately owned and they, and they have a voice in how the HOA is run. There's, there's another 50 lots that the builder has and he has that weighted vote of the 50 lots.
Yeah, but go to 60% owner.
60%.
And then 40% is owned by the builder. You could have 60% of the community being like, hey, you know,
So his, so his 40, 40, 40 lots that are left.
Yeah, yeah.
He's going to make money on those lots.
What I'm saying is the HOA could.
The HO, no, the HO, the HOA, the, when, when you have an HOA, it's, it's based on a certain number of lots, right? And it's, it's not, they're not going to say, okay, we take control of the HOA and we are saying we are changing this community and it's only going to be 40 lots, right? If, if you say that, then it breaks off. So the, the owner of those 40 remaining lots has his own community that he is a hundred percent owner of and he can do whatever he wants with that. He can form his own HOA and he can say, okay, now we're going to have these different rules for these 40 lots. Instead of having one huge HOA of a hundred lots and trying to make everybody play nice together, now you've broken it up into 40 lots and 60 lots. And the, the builder is not at a disadvantage, having a hundred percent ownership of those new lots. He can go any different direction that he wants to, to get his money out of those lots.
Well, again, I, I mean, uh, we are, you and I are certainly not debating a position.
Right, right, right. Exactly.
But HOAs are important for you.
Yes.
Then talk to me about Avamore, right? It sounds like you've spoken with a number of people up there. This was another huge consideration in the 2023 mayoral election. Should we have annexed in Avamore or should we have not?
I'm, I'm, I'm not going to speak on it because we did, right? It doesn't matter. You can't, you can't go back and change the past. All you can do is move forward. So I, I would like to move forward and protect those residents who are in Avamore. If, if they want something done, then I'm going to work hard to, to help them get what they want done. They're now a resident of Eagle. They're just as much a resident as I am living in Legacy. So I, I, they, they deserve a voice at the table.
Okay. Well, then how about this? Should we continue annexing in areas and gobbling up large swaths of planned communities, like the community we're sitting in? Should there be a push for Eagle to gobble up this community? This is unincorporated county.
Right.
I think there, you could make a very strong case for it.
If, I think that there should be public input. And if the people living in the community want to be annexed into the city, then I think that it should happen. If the people in the, in, in the city don't want to be annexed or in the, in the development, don't want to be annexed into the city, then I think that it shouldn't. I think that we should listen to the residents. I don't know any better. I, I'm not an expert, right? So I'm not going to make decisions for if we should annex this or if we shouldn't annex this. My whole view, my, my whole push is let's talk to the people who actually live there, who it's going to affect. I mean, I don't want the city council to make decisions for people and pass things that, pass regulations that people have to abide by. I want them to work with the people and let the people help shape the future of Eagle. I, I don't, I, I don't believe that, um, that just because you sit on city council, that you're better than anyone else.
Okay, let me rephrase the question then. Um, do you think it would be a financially intelligent move to annex in a community like this?
Uh, there would be the potential for a lot of revenue from taxes. That would, that would be one thing. Then I think that they, you would have to look at the expenses that would go out the door from the taxes. Is it, is it a cost effective thing? Is, you know, I think there would have to be a lot of not only public input from the people living here in this community, but there would also have to be a lot of, um, behind the doors work done on balance sheets, you know, just running the numbers. Okay, we could potentially make this much. We would potentially spend this much. You know, taking that into account along with the people who are living there, then you have to, you have to factor in the emergency services, right? The police and the fire and, um,
Well, the fire, fire district takes care of itself, right? Like that's not a city, that's not a city thing.
Okay. Um, but emergency services and.
Sure, like, like the contract with, uh, with the sheriff's office. Yeah, yeah.
Right, right. So, so you, you just have to look at the whole picture and you have to say, okay, these are, these are the, these are the positives, these are the negatives. And then make a public decision, not make a closed door decision. And, and that's, that's, that's what I, that's what I believe. I, you know, I, 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 I don't know enough of the specifics at this moment to be able to give you an answer.
It's essentially like, look, just on principle, I don't think that's like the principle of like, yeah, we should annex in more, uh, you know, communities like this or not. It's like, no, 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 you gotta take it on a case by case basis.
Right.
With, with the Amor, and again, please excuse my ignorance, with the Avamore annexation, did, was that something the residents had to request? Because through the whole conversation, I remember talking to people being like, did Avamore people even want to be part of Eagle because their tax base went up?
Right.
Right? Like what did they get out of it? And theoretically you could argue, well, they get enhanced police service. You, you know, they get, obviously they get to tap into city water, which was something they're like, oh no, they have enough water. JK, they don't have enough water, but now they're part of the city. So Viola, get it, get after it, right?
Right.
But again, like, is it, is it the kind of thing where do the residents of the community have to request to be annexed in or is it the developer?
Well, I don't know enough about that situation. Uh, the person who probably would is Chris Hadden, who has a lot. He, he runs SOS Eagle. And so I think that would be a better question for him. But if and when I am elected and if someone were to pose that question, then I would go to work and I'd be like, okay, let's rip it up. I am staying up late tonight and I'm pulling out all these books and I'm finding out what's happening here. And, you know, I, I want to, I want to know what happened. There's got to be a paper trail, you know? Did these people really ask to be part of Eagle or was it a backdoor deal? Was it, was it, hey, we need some more money and this developer needs, you know, some cash? So let's make this deal. I don't know what happened. So I, I would like to investigate it.
Oh, like specifically you'd like to investigate Avamore?
Well, no, I'd, I'd like to investigate anything. So one of, one of, one of the, one of my, one of my, um, my, my, my pillars that I'm standing on is that, um, I want to hear from residents and I want to hear the issues that you're concerned about. And I want you to give them to me in writing so that there's accountability, so that once I'm elected, I can go down the list and I can say, okay, this is what this person wants. Well, you know, like I can, I can, I can geek out and I can say 10 people want this to happen and 15 people want this to happen. And so the 15, I'm going to work on that first. And then the ones who have the 10, then they're next. And I'm just going to go down the line and I'm going to have a list of things that, hey, these people were interested in this and I'm working on that and this is my outcome. This is, this is what I found for it. And so I want there to be a, in a, a list so that I am accountable on issues that people were concerned about that got me elected.
I appreciate that. Let's move on from Avamore then.
Okay.
Let's, let's talk about economic growth, right? This is a big concern for a lot of people, you know, obviously it's like the In-N-Out thing from 2023. And God bless. Man, we had it the other night. One of my kids had a birthday and we went out and got an In-N-Out. It was so good. Anyway, oh, it was. Um, and there's, there's a difference in philosophy with, with some people in the community. Some people want, you know, more mom and pops, which by the way, last time we had city council, uh, city council interviews, I asked people point blank, where's the best burger in the city of Eagle? And there were multiple people were like, well, there's that one, uh, that's Meridian. There's, I'm not going to say there's not because I don't know for sure, but I couldn't get a straight answer out of anybody about like where the best burger is, right? Anyway, the point is that some people think that we should really have more like mom and pops. You know, for instance, fast food places, we should not go by the way of, of drive-throughs. We should avoid, you know, big box stores, things like that. And other people are recognizing like, hey, look, those have a place in our community. First off, they have great tax revenue, which is, which is important. Um, and they, they offer services and, and sales and stuff that people are just going to go elsewhere and get. Like if we don't have Home Depot on, you know, 55, we're going down to Lowe's down in, you know, Meridian and they get tax revenue. So growing businesses and everybody brings a pet IQ. I know, I don't even know what pet IQ does, but I know it's a gigantic building and I know it's homegrown and whatever it is they do, they do it really well, right? So awesome pet IQ. But what do we do about economic growth in the city of Eagle?
Well, what do we do about it? I, I think that we need to attract businesses that would, that would have that, that would have the city's best interest at, the city's best interest at their heart. So whether it be a big box store or whether it be a mom and pop, they need to know that Eagle has a certain uniqueness and they need to value that and move and make it part of their business plan.
Like, could you give me an example of that? Cause I've heard like, hey, you have to have these colors or your facade has to be here.
I don't care about.
Yeah. What is it specifically that you're talking about?
Well, so give you an example, like when I moved here, um, I looked all over the treasure valley, all over the treasure valley and on the, on the west side, there was a certain feel to it and downtown, there's a certain feel to it.
Those are different feels.
Right?
I was in Caldwell today and then I was in Boise. I was like, this is a world apart.
Yes, yes. And then if you go by Micron, there's another feel to it.
Right.
And so then I, I was like, okay, but someone said something about Eagle. So I took a drive out. It was, and it was a drive at the time because there was nothing out here. So, I mean, like, there, there was.
May I ask, when did you move?
In 2014.
Okay.
So, I mean, it was before the huge explosive growth. So I, I took a drive out here and I just came down Eagle and I kept driving and I saw the, you know, the berms and the nice houses. And then I got into downtown Eagle and there was like the big, there was the archway. And then I turned on, on Old State and I'm like, oh, this is so quaint. This is so nice. And then I, then I, I, I went back into Boise into my hotel and I started doing some research and seeing, hey, you know, I want new construction, but I, I really liked the feel of Eagle. I liked, it was kind of like a hometown, right? It wasn't a big city. I, I know some people like a city feel. I liked the feel of Eagle. So that's why I wanted to move here. And yes, I live on the outskirts of, of Eagle almost to Star, but I'm still part of Eagle. And so I think when, so the, so the feeling of Eagle is it's a growing city, but it still has a, a nice country homey feel to it. And I think that any, um, business that comes here needs to value that also. That yes, you're going to go after the consumer. Yes, you're going to make money here, but you still need to respect that it might be an ag culture that you're going into, or it might be, um, that people want small town things. They don't want the, the, the buzz and the glare of what a big city could offer. So you need to develop your business plan to make sure that the people living around you are going to be comfortable with it. Like what Nancy Merrill was talking about, because I watched her interview with you about the, there were some signs and there were some things that just weren't up to the, the tradition of what she saw Eagle to be, right? So, um, I, I just think that if businesses come here, that they need to understand that people living here want the amenities of moving forward, but they still want a, a small town feel.
Yeah. Do you think there's anything specific? Cause people talk about attracting business. Do you think there's anything in specific you would say that would be effective in attracting, you know, business or companies?
As a city council person trying to attract companies to come here? I don't know. I would, the first thing that I would go after is, hey, we have people who, um, are pretty well off here. So if you can, if you can figure out what kind of product that they are willing to buy, then I, we want you to come, right? So that would force the companies to say, okay, what do these people want here? You know, the people who are living here, let's look at their lifestyle. It's, it's a whole marketing thing, right? So what do these people want to buy? Do they want to buy the, the latest gadget? What, or do they, you know, do they want to buy? I don't know. But it's, it's a marketing ploy. It, you need to figure out what the people of Eagle want before you move here. Instead of saying, yeah, we're going to have this business come here and they're going to bring all these jobs. And then Eagle has to deal with it. Cause, cause we're just after getting the revenue from this company. Let's, let's say a, a business building wants to come here and they want to pay to make a really tall building or, you know, like a building that, that, um, is part, that, is underneath the height limits of our code or whatever. But, you know, they're going to bring in, um, a lot of cubicles, right? And a lot of people and a lot of traffic. Um, so there, it's, it's helping the tax base. Yet it's not helping the city because they are bringing in more traffic. They are bringing in more people. And it's, it's, it's like a, it's, it's putting a city building inside of a small town, right? So it doesn't really match the feel of the city. So instead of going after just the money, I, I want the businesses to think about what our city needs before they come in.
Gotcha. Um, there was, there was a discussion about, uh, Old State and that the businesses on the west side don't feel as connected and, and part of downtown as the businesses on the right side.
Right.
What do you think can be done to, to integrate and kind of like marry those two pieces again and really have a more connected downtown?
Well, in order, there's definitely a different feel between one side of Eagle on Old State and the other side, right? Because the, I think it's the, the east, right? The, the east side, um, the businesses are older. They look like they're homes that have been renovated. And then on the west side, they're newer buildings that I, I think.
I think you got that back. Yeah.
So on the, the Boise side, the Boise side is the east side, right?
Uh, that's correct. Yeah. So the east side has.
So the east side had, no, the east side has like where Zen Bento used to be. That's on the Boise side by the Eagle Senior Center and there used to be a cookie. So all those are older homes that have been renovated that, that were made into businesses, right? But then on the other side where the, where the youth ranch is, those are more modern buildings.
Gotcha. I always think about Spitfire Taco. I was like, you can't get more modern than that. Yeah. But you have a mix. I, I understand a hundred percent what you're saying.
Yeah. So, I mean, so the feel is different, right? Right off the bat. So if you're, if you like say, cause my mom lived in Winding Creek, right? So she lived in Winding Creek and she would walk, she would walk downtown and go to the different businesses. And so she would go to all the businesses on her side, on the, on the Boise side of, um, Old State because that was there, right? But I don't think she, she didn't want to cross state and go to the other businesses because not only did she have to cross state, but then the field just got different, right? It, it's not as walkable as it is downtown. And I consider downtown the east, the east side versus the west side. But if you, if you want to bring them together, I think that you need to, um, make sure that all the buildings look alike, right? So that the feel is the same. And if there are sidewalks, that the sidewalks extend from one side to the other side to make the transition across Eagle be more seamless so that it doesn't feel so distinct when you go from one side of Eagle to the other side of Eagle.
Gotcha. Man, I will not be sorry when ADHD is done.
Yes.
Gosh, that is a lot. Um, the, the budget in Eagle is unique in that we don't really cover that many things, right? Like we have our library, fine. And, you know, we have parks and rec, that's fine too. But, and But yeah, and you know, obviously law enforcement, contract with the, with the sheriff, but we don't have, you know, fire. We don't have, um, excuse me, schools. We don't have hospitals. We don't really take care of our roads unless, you know, we wanna expedite a process with ACHD. So is there something within the budget that you feel like, uh, is lacking in transparency or needs more accountability?
Well, I did look at the budget and, and I had, I managed to get about two pages full of questions that I, I wanted to go to the budget meeting, but then my HOA was having a meeting on the same day. So I was like, okay, well, I'm not on city council yet. So, uh, and, and I officially haven't declared. So I'm gonna go to my HOA meeting. So I went to my HOA meeting instead. But yeah, I did have questions about, um, every department has, um, a slating for uniforms. And I thought, why do we have uniforms for every different department? Because you can't, you can't take uniforms off on an office job, right? On your taxes, you can't, because you can use it on your, on your downtime. So it's not specific for that. And I don't see people in our Eagle office wearing uniforms in, in the, in city hall, right? Why is there a budget line item for uniforms?
Is it like a big budget li, like is it?
I mean, it's not, it's not a huge, it's not a huge number, but I mean, there are line item because
It's like, I know the sheriff when I, when I went to get my license, like the sheriff, you know, like the DMV, they have polo shirts with like a, you know, Ada County Sheriff Office on them. Like is that?
That, that could be considered a uniform. That could be considered a uniform. But, um, you know, I, I want more information about certain things. And this comes directly from me dealing with my HOA with the way that, that the financials were put together, saying, well, it's not really that much money. So we're gonna use it for this. We're gonna label it, this is the line item, right? But what, what does that entail? To give you an example, when, um, when I was at the city council meeting and I was talking about the outcome from the Eagle Senior Center court case that was just decided. And I, I, I said, okay, we're gonna have, we have the potential, the city has the potential to pay legal fees, right? So let's look at what our legal fees are. And so then I saw we had over $200,000 for, for professional fees, which, which by definition is supposed to be, as I understand it, accounting and legal, right? And then we had another separate line item for, uh, legal salary of over $200,000. So as an accountant, I'm thinking, all right, why are we spending over $400,000? Almost a half a million dollars on legal in Eagle? If, if we're running it the right way, right? So yes, and I, so I think that the budget needs to be gone over, that it needs to be investigated and that we, we can, just because we have the money, doesn't mean that we should be spending the money. If we can save in certain areas, then we can spend in others. And we don't have to raise revenue for it.
Gotcha. Um, we, we have a lot of projects that have been started that have not
Have not been finished. Yes.
Talk to me about those. Cause I mean, we have fiber, we have the sports park, we have the sports minna park, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So do you think that those are things that like, one, we need to see all the way through? Do you think they're the right decision and where to spend money? Do you think that they were, you know, correctly priced out or?
Well, you know what? That, that's again, going back to, to the past, um, you can't correct what was done in the past. All you can do is deal with what's, what you have going forward. So if the money was slated for it, if the projects have been started, they need to be completed, right? I mean, we don't need to throw more money at studies and at experts telling us if we should or if we shouldn't. It was done. Let's get it done. Let's, you know, let's make a decision. If, if it was a bad decision and there are more minuses rather than pluses, let's dump it. If it's still a valid thing that we need to move forward with, let's finish it. Let's not just sit on our hands and throw money at things to try and decide what we should do. I, I think if the decision was made, then we need to move forward. And if the, if it was a bad decision, well, then how can we make it a good decision? Or if, if we can cut it loose and make a profit on it, then that's what we need to do, you know? I mean, you don't need to spend time looking backwards. You need to look forward.
Gotcha. Eagle, you referenced it earlier. Eagle has grown a lot. What do we do about growth? How do we manage it? And what do we do about the ever increasing cost of housing? You know, do we have the right combination of apartments and, and, um, individual ownership properties? Do we have the right combination of, of different types of ownership, uh, items, right? And you know, like townhouses, single families, blah, 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 blah. Like what do we do?
Okay. So you're, so you're moving into like zoning? Is that what you're, what you're talking about?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, I am a Navy brat. So that means that for the first 15 years of my life, I was military dependent and I moved around a lot. I moved at the max, the max that we stayed in a place was two years. So I've lived in a lot of different housing structures. I've lived in, um, mobile homes. I've lived in military housing. I've lived in, uh, single family residences in a community. I have lived in, um, duplexes. I've lived in townhomes. I've lived in a log cabin. You know, like I've, I've, I've lived, um, on acreage with outbuildings with animals, you know? So I've lived in all those different kinds of structures. And I think to make a city, um, healthy and profitable, that you do need a variety of different houses, right? You don't need just a whole bunch of the same thing, like miles and miles of sub, of subdivisions. You know, just, just each slightly different with a slightly bigger house or a slightly smaller house or, um, a different facade, you know, like, so I think you, you need, you need a complexity of housing structures. That is a given. Did, does Eagle have enough complexity so that, um, it can just make a blanket statement saying, okay, all future buildings have to be an X type? I don't know. I think that there needs to be a lot more public interest. Because I didn't even know when you, I didn't even know that there was a zoning issue in Eagle, until you said that you were gonna ask me about zoning. And so then I looked into it and it, I don't think that there is enough public input to make a solid decision on if zoning should, for the future, only be a certain way. I think that there needs to, and when I was looking into it, um, the mayor said that he wasn't aware of it. The city council members.
When you say wasn't aware of what?
That he, he was surprised that the zoning issue was on the board.
Zoning issue was on the board.
Right. Like, um, when, when I looked into it, it said, uh, the internet said that the zoning, it, cause I did zoning issues Eagle Idaho.
Sure.
And, um, what came up was, um, there's a proposal that all future building is going to be single homes on lots larger than an acre per se. I mean, there were, there was a single home on larger lots, right? So it, so the future of Eagle would, would be basically all homes on large lots. I don't know if that's what we need. And I think that
And we, uh, uh, my apologies. I don't, I genuinely have no idea what you're talking about. Can you educate me?
No, no. Well, I mean, I just quickly did a search, a Google search, um, a couple of days ago. And it said that, um, cause I, cause I told you, I, I Googled, um, zoning Eagle Idaho.
Yeah.
Current issues. And then what came up was there was, um, a proposal that all future building in the city of Eagle should be limited to a single residence on a large lot.
And who proposed this? And did they propose it to the city? Is this something the city council is considering?
Uh, it's something that is coming up. Yes. And, and, um,
We should find out about this right now.
Exactly. Google it. Google it and educate me because
Google A.
Yes. Because, uh, hey, Google is your friend on a lot of things. And, um, the comments that came up on it were, uh, Mayor Pike was surprised. Oh, there was, there was a, there was supposed to have been a period of public comment on it, but not a lot happened, right? Well, that's because nobody knows about it. You didn't know about it. I didn't know about it. The comments were the, the mayor didn't know about it. And so if, uh, planning and zoning wants to have this ordinance passed, then I think before anything is done, a lot more people need to know about it and have input on it before it's passed.
Is this, was this in the, in Boise dev from Margaret Carmel?
I, I am not positive. It could be. I don't know. Are you Googling it right now?
Yeah. The Google A brought up. I just had Margaret in yesterday. I love Margaret Carmel. She's, she's a great journalist. Okay. And this is an article from June 16th, 2025. So relatively recent. Treasure Valley grows. One of the, uh, area's highest priced suburbs is looking to scale even further back on density. In early June, the Eagle Planning and Zoning Commission considered a proposal to amend the city's comprehensive plan to scale back the number of homes allowed per acre across the city, along with changing home, uh, excuse me, how many homes can be built in three residential zones? The proposal would also remove the highest density residential and commercial zones in Eagles downtown. This was first reported by Idaho Stateman. Bill Vaughn, the city's planning and zoning administrator, said the change came at the request of the Eagle City Council. There is currently an ongoing effort for the city to update the entire comprehensive plan implemented in 2017.
Yes, I know that. Yep.
But Vaughn said the council members wanted, uh, changes to allow density to come forward as soon as possible. There was no public input process or alert of the proposal to the city residents beyond a minimum amount required by the state to notice, uh, state law to notice meetings. State code requires meeting agenda, agenda items to be publicly noted, uh, notice on newspaper. You know, the density multi-story development proposed in downtown Eaglewood was not desirable. And this change follows feedback further, uh, restricting development of any projects that aren't single family homes on large lots. It would heavily restrict development of downtown homes, apartments, condominiums, and multi-story, uh, mixed projects, except for specific areas along the city's most heavily trafficked corridors. Wow, man. And this happened in June of this year.
So it's relatively, yeah. So I didn't know anything about that and I didn't, I, I didn't know until you asked me, okay, we're gonna talk about zoning. And so then that's why I Googled it.
Yeah. I usually when people are like, hey, um, what do you wanna talk about? I'm like, I don't know, like law enforcement, growth, zoning, you know, traffic, whatever. So I didn't, I didn't have like a specific question on zoning.
Right.
But that's pretty wild. I mean, one specific question I do have, it pertains to, to apartments, but, um, and so you, you're saying based on this, it, it's saying that it will only be single family homes on one acre.
Large lots. Yeah. On large lots. And so I think, I think we, I think the public needs to have way more input on that. We need to know about that before it's incorporated into a comprehensive plan.
By the way, shout out Margaret Carmel. Again, that's her article. I'm not like, these are not my words. Okay. It is interesting. Okay. So again, you're, you're saying, hey, the city of Eagle, the Eagle residents should have say on how the zoning is changed.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Gotcha.
I, it goes to another, like behind the doors kind of thing happening that the people actually living in the city don't know what, they don't know it. They don't know what's going on. And, and the people
Do you think that's a good thing?
No, I don't think it's a good thing.
Not that they don't know what's going on, but do you think that the, uh, proposal, the, the planning and zoning proposal is a good thing?
No, I, I, well, personally, no. I, I think, I think that there, no, because I live in Legacy and there are a variety of homes in Legacy. There are large homes. There are small homes. There are townhomes. And if the future development is going to be just single homes on large lots? Yeah. I like the idea of larger lots, but it might not be the best use of the land. I mean, that in a certain pocket, there might, it, it might sustain more homes closer together. In another part, it might sustain larger homes on larger lots. But it's making a blanket statement saying, you know, everything needs to be a single family home on a larger lot. I don't like that at all. Personally, my vote would be no for that. But that goes back to my, my, my premise that if I get on city council, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily, my opinion doesn't have more sway than any other, any other person in Eagle. So even if I don't agree with it, if, if my constituents say they want it, then I would have to vote the way that my constituents want, you know? I'm not, just because I'm in that position to vote, doesn't mean that my opinion is better.
Gotcha.
So.
Gotcha. Talk to me about apartments, because that is just like a hot thing in this community. And especially considering what we just talked about, which is theoretically, there's an idea that, you know, we should reduce essentially density. Okay, fine, whatever. None of my affair. Um, what do you think about apartments?
I know that, um, the apartment buildings that were built right across the street from, right across, um, state on Linder. I know that they've gotten a lot of flack that people think that they look like army barracks. They call them army barracks because you know, there's, they are big buildings and yes, it's a high density. But, um, they do, and they have a lot of cars that go in and out onto, um, onto Linder. You know, it doesn't, it, it's not, it, I wouldn't wanna buy a million dollar home that sits right next to it. But we do need higher density living and they have to go somewhere, right? And, um, and I looked it up because Nancy Merrill brought it up and she said that it, you know, that it was an eyesore. And
I don't think she named one particular
No, she didn't. She didn't. She didn't name it specifically. That's correct. I, it's, it's my assumption that that is the development that she's talking about. And I think it's called the Clara Apartments. I'm not sure.
We should probably not attribute that sentiment to her.
No, we shouldn't. We shouldn't. Speaking just of apartment bills, apartment building.
There you go.
The apartments that I have heard, um, negative reviews of are the apartments. And I think it's called the Clara. Now, um,
I'm sorry Clara. I don't think you're ugly. You're beautiful.
Yes.
You're beautiful. God, Michael Buble, I hate him. He's the worst. You know, you know, when
Nice song.
Listen to me. You know, a singer has hit rock bottom when the best they got is Christmas music. Like what's the last thing you heard Mariah Carey sing? You're like, that's the one. That's the one. No, it's Christmas and Michael Buble couldn't hack it. And now he's like, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle, although it's shut up, Michael Buble. Anyway, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Clara, one love.
Yes, yes. So, um, uh, I, Ridgeway was the person who actually, um, approved that development. And I think that's something that happens a lot with, um, local government is that people who come afterwards get blamed for, um, the decisions that their predecessors made. And so, um, I, I looked into it and you know, Ridgeway was the one who approved that and it, it didn't go up until, until the Pierce Pike years. And it didn't get finished until, you know, just a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And, um, I think it's, you know, I didn't know what to think about it. I, I do know that a lot of my neighbors were really upset about it, but it's not that bad. They have, um, they have nice, uh, landscaping. They have a pool. They, they redid the, the outside. There's a pathway to the, to the river. There's, I thought that they would need a traffic light there. They don't need a traffic light, apparently. There, there's been no uptick in accidents that I know of right in that area. I do know that there are a lot, an awful lot of people are going in and out of there, but the, the road seems to be handling the traffic. Now, speaking of that, on the other side of, um, of Highway 44 in state on Linder, I can sit through multiple light cycles, like four light cycles to get about a block and a half from where I get onto Linder to state.
You mean like north? No, you mean like north?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, well, cause, cause I'm north and I'm just going south.
Trying to go south.
I'm going, I'm going south and I pull, I pull out of my home and I'm like, I could have walked to the light faster.
Gosh, yeah. Just put it in park. Call it a day. I hope you don't have to go to the bathroom.
Yeah. And I'm like, where are all of these cars coming from? I, I have no idea where they're coming from, but they're all coming down Linder and they want to get on state, right? And so, yeah, I don't care about the other side of, of state on Linder. They're doing fine. They, they've got a wide road. They have like two left turn lanes. And yeah, it's, yeah.
Dude, let's get Alexis Pickering in here. ACHD commission.
Yes.
Let's take her on a ride.
Yes. Yes.
Tell Linder, be like, come on, we'll, we'll record the whole thing. It's like, we'll bring popcorn and we'll be there. We'll be there for like a full feature length film. Like we have, we could watch, you know, like, I don't know. What's that, uh, Ice Age with a squirrel? It'd be great. It's like, you just feel frozen and eh.
Yeah. So, so a priority that would, that would be one of my priorities, um, on city council is expedited improvements to infrastructure and the roads in Eagle. To make sure that the explosive growth that we have experienced has someplace to go. That the, that all the people living there, um, the roads are widened faster. I mean, i- if it's not planned for the next five years, let's move it up to like the next year so that people can get going. They can go in and out in their happy residence rather than waiting for the, for the planned development to happen.
I got you.
Cause, and, and I work, I work near the, um, the Ford Center. And I'm so, I'm waiting so patiently for 16 to be finished.
You are losing years of your life.
I know. To go all the way up to like Franklin. If, once it's finished, I will be get to, I will get to work in like five minutes. Just because I can get, I can pull it. Well, once I get to state, if I sit through my four cycles to get from Linder onto state, then I just have to make it down to Highway 16 and I'm, it's a straight shot.
Straight shot.
Straight shot, right, right to my, right to where I.
You're talking about the Ford Idaho Center.
Yes. My, my build, my, my office building is like right, it's in the parking lot of the Ford Idaho Center.
There's an office building in the parking lot?
Well, there's, there was an office building and then there was like, um, a grass lot. And then there's the parking lot of the Ford Center.
Oh, gotcha.
And, um, through the time that I've been working there, the parking lot or the, the grass lot became, um, extended stay kind of hotel. So, yeah. So I am like that close to the Ford Center. So whenever there's, whenever there's an event happening, I always open, you know, like when I'm going home, I'm like, ah, my parking lot is full. So it must be an event happening.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Um, listen, we've talked about, I feel like we've been on a journey. We, we quoted Margaret Carmel. We've been up and down all around. Um, do you have anything else to add?
Oh, well, I'd, I'd like to say that I want to draw a distinction between myself and the other candidates that are running for city council. I am very much not a politician. I am a credentialed, a finance person. I love to geek out over numbers and I like to read legal paperwork to get to the heart of the issue. Um, I'm, I'm not what, I'm not much on public speaking. I do like to sit down and, and talk with people one-on-one. Um.
See, this wasn't that bad. You weren't worried about public, this isn't that bad. I told you, I was like, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna talk some trash, we're gonna move on with our lives. I delivered trash talking and having a good time. Come on now.
Okay.
Okay.
So yeah, so, so I'm, I'm different, I'm different from the other candidates. I am not a politician. I am your neighbor. I want to hear from you. I want to work for you and I want you to hold me accountable. I believe strongly in due diligence and accountability. And, um, you know, a paper trail of everything that you do. I want to hear from everybody and I want to be held accountable. I encourage everyone to do due diligence on the other candidates that are running. They, yes, they have had political experience. Well, not all of them, but the majority of them have had some kind of political exposure. And so with that, unfortunately you get some baggage and you need to understand the reasons why they left their position, whatever it was, and why they're running for, um, for this position with city council in Eagle. I also want to say I am very much a nonpartisan person. I am independent. I don't believe that the party should dictate policy. I think that the right person for the job should be elected. And that, um, like I said before, no matter what my constituents, no matter my personal opinion. So if I were part of a party, I'd have to toe the party line. If, as an independent, I can represent everyone in Eagle, whether they're, whatever party they are. I want to hear you and I want to go to work for you. I'm not limited by a party affiliation.
I dig.
So.
Well, thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
It is not, it is, I, I have never run a campaign. I never will. I've talked to a lot of people that are doing it and even people that have the best of attitudes towards it, admit it's a lot.
It is, it is a lot. It's more than I expected. But I'm up to the challenge because my kids are grown and I have nothing but free time. So I want to, I want to do something for my community and I want to work hard for the community. I want to give back.
Well, thank you for giving. Thank you for participating in this and win, lose or draw. I appreciate that, uh, you know, you're putting your neck out there and bringing issues that are important to you to the table.
Yes, thank you. And I, and I want to, yeah, I want to hear your issues too. I want you to, to give me them in writing so that I can work on it.
Oh, I don't have any good ideas in the least.
No, not that, not ideas. I want to hear your issues.
No, no, no. Whatever my issue is, I'm sure it's bad. You need not rely on me for any kind of input on any subject. Anyway, thank you for coming again. Good luck.
Thanks.